This.
So I didn't.
We've got a fire marshal. Remember that?
Okay. Okay, bye.
So he's circling the warehouse. Looking for a parking place. Okay, so doesn't work. Did you get sound?
Yeah, it sounds obvious. Are y'all on?
Uh, mine's turned off, is I see the light.
Let's pick it up in here.
It worked.
It was.
That's a little loud.
Got a screen.
Okay. All right, as soon as the fire marshal gets here, or gets in the building, we will begin our meeting.
My county park office.
This is worship.
You still recorded?
Yes. Uh.
Fifty. Fifty.
Yeah, no, I just.
Thank you. There he is. Good afternoon, sir, I'm gonna call our meeting to order at three. Um, three oh five. And uh, we do have a forum, all the commissioners and myself are present, and item number two, discuss solar farm fires, so. Would you like to? For me to give a synopsis of what we're talking about, or would you like to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, we have a solar farm off seven seventy-three in Ben Wheeler that has had a frequent fires, grass fires caused by the equipment there that have, uh, we've had to send our fire department to Ben Wheeler and multiple other uh, departments have gone out there to, to uh, extinguish the grass fires, the, and uh, I will let Sean talk about his investigation into those fires and the cause of them now. You want, you want to use a podium, or you just wanna sit down right there?
What would you prefer?
Just have a seat. Be fine.
So, they had a lot more fires there than I've had investigations. Many of the fires have remained contained within the farm itself. And, and many of them have been where uh, one or two men have just went out there and, and dealt with it, but it's still, uh, that's not to make light of it to say that it's not creating an inconvenience for the department. Uh, they're still having to make a response, still having to use their equipment and water, uh, and you know, all their their uh, still requiring their service, so they're still having to go, um, the investigations that I've made, what I've determined, it's been due to equipment failure of some kind, uh. Something's happened causing, causing for a short, uh, on the panel of some kind. It's caused from melting, uh, then that's just shorting in the plastic or something. Insulation is melting and dripping to the ground. And then from there, that, that heat and everything is getting to the grass. Uh, it's every time I've been there, the grass is always a condition, it's always, it's always a factor, it's never a nice, clean kept facility, uh, it's, it's always uh, something, uh, that factors in, so, um. And then, so it, it is a failure in the panel of some kind. Uh, drops to the grass, there's always dead vegetation on the ground that it spreads from there, it just, you know, rolls across. Um, and then a lot of times, uh, when Ben Wheeler has somebody, uh, their chief, uh, Chief McDonald is uh, sometimes, a, a lot of times, he's been in the area, so he's been out there to make a quick response for lack of better words, and where he's been able to catch it before it's gotten out of the plant. Um, and then the wind hadn't been, but you know, when there's a high wind day, and, and he had, you know, the, the response hadn't been as fast, or uh, there's times, I, I get conflicting stories because um, and, and I'm not saying he's not telling the truth, I, I tend to believe the volunteer fire department over the facility people, but he's met at the gate, and they're like, ah, we got it, no big deal. And then they're called back because it's turned into a big deal that they didn't got, or something, but um, it is. Uh, so it, it spreads, you know, and then they don't have it, or you know. And, and so it's turned into issues like that, um, where, where, but it's, it's never. Uh, I, I don't know anything about control burn, I've never found any evidence of where they've had a, where they've been intentionally burning an area to a control burn, to burn off something, because the people that are working out there, that's not their job. They're not there to burn vegetation or, or groundskeeper or anything, the people that are working there when I'm there or, or have been there, are, they're there to work on the panels, or so, they're there for that kinda stuff, so they're not there for that, they're uh, I've never been there when groundskeepers have been there. And that was from my understanding and what I've found in investigations, the the entities that own the facilities, there's different contracts for things, so they have a contract with a company that services and maintains the solar equipment and its distribution into the power grid. Uh, so they're there and they watch for all that, so they're, you know, watching and repairing and, and maintaining that. And then there's a, a contract with uh, a, a landscape management company of some kind, and they, they bid to them to three or four times, or however many times a year, it's not that often, but they bid to maintain the facility in groundskeeping to do so we can continue. Um, and I'm not sure that the amount or the price or whatever, it's not done very well, in my personal opinion. Uh, because, but I, you can see the terrain, I mean, it's what, four hundred acres, I'm being told, I think?
Three eighty-six.
Three eighty-six, so, close. I mean, but you can see, I mean, if you're standing there gazing across it, it's rolling, and you can tell, I mean, it's not just a big flat place, so it's gonna have i- in, in seasonal time, it's gonna have low spots and high spots and all that, to where there's obviously springtime, we're gonna have places where water's holding or not holding and all that, so you're not gonna be able to, you know, you probably can't get in spots and load effectively in places, uh, as you could in others a- and all that, but um, I mean, I don't know if we, you could just say it's, you know, not my problem, user meter, I, I don't know, I don't know how far that goes, or I don't know on, on all that, but um, the, I can say that the problem is dead vegetation on the ground, but you can't help. I think it's fair to say you can't help equipment failure, it's gonna happen, you have a three hundred eighty-six acres of solar equipment, and by nature, we're gonna have, I mean, equipment's gonna fail, it's just, it's the way it is, that stuff's gonna, you know, anything, this machinery is gonna break over time and give out, and anything with the electrical running through, you can talk to any electrical engineer, and they're gonna tell you, anything with current going through vibrates constantly, and there's friction, and that's going on nonstop, so anytime that's happening, you're creating some sort of heat and friction and everything, so something at some point's gonna give, sooner or later, and then, so they have their failed points and their weak places, and when that happens, and it, it's, it's what's left over underneath, uh, that's gonna be the problem, and then we've got dead vegetation and and it's unkept, um, that's, that's when we're having our problem, but uh, getting beyond that, um, but if, to me, if they had something surrounding the facility, you know, where it stayed contained, uh, it, it would be a big, big help, uh, for, for that, it's their facility, if it burnt down, it's on them, at that point, but um.
So, the first fires that, that we had was after they had a hailstorm that damaged all, many of the panels, correct?
They, that's what they said, there were a bunch of hailstorm damaged panels, and, and the, the owner, one of the owners I talked to, um, and this was an overseas conversation, and he blamed it on, there were fragments of panel that were on the ground that basically sunlight was refracting from the, essentially something like if you held a piece of glass or a magnifying glass to the, to something, and it was causing for that to heat it and, and have it, uh, and it was just because it was broken and on the ground. And, and it was in such an array that they couldn't possibly have cleaned all that up. Um, and it, it was out there like that, and that was what was causing all that, I didn't, I never really found much of that to.
Yeah, I thought that description a little bit.
Sure, go ahead.
These panels cracking, busts from either they get hot, get raining on them, shattered, or other hail shattered, whatever, it happens anyway. But these panels follow the sun, so they're constantly moving every day, they move back and then forward. That's where you get these twisting and binding cables, and you get these twisting and flexing plates. So when the sun comes through here, it hits the edge of the glass, that's a magnifying glass on the frame. You got a wind blow this deep, dead grass under it, big fire. And it's pretty much repeatedly what keeps happening. And, and from a department standpoint view, it's just a matter of time for one of my young guys or something gets hurt, find water, a hot wire, it's gonna happen, it's just a matter of time. And my understanding is they're living in battery containment systems, which I'll be very vigilant of, these things are highly toxic when they catch on fire in the park, and it's gonna happen. And it's gonna fall all over the ground when they explode, their own batteries that are size, they're sixteen foot wide, eight foot long, everybody gonna bring in five hundred of them. That's gonna be.
That's, that's the subject of item number three, okay, is, is a battery situation. Well, right, now we're talking about the solar panel.
When I asked for clarification for him on, um, why he could not, 'cause that's what I was happening, you know, okay, we, you've got a broken panel. You know, why can't you isolate the broken panel? 'Cause it was like, well, we're waiting on parts, and you know, blaming China and whatever else, or we don't have parts for this and that, you know, discontinued, isolated, you know, wh- you know, why is it still electrically energized and everything, I don't know. Uh, you know, I don't know this, how it will work, or take it offline, you know?
Right.
Uh, so that it doesn't be your magnifying glass, or you know, and everything, and I couldn't get an answer for that, you know, and, and his response was, it's not that, it's the, it's the broken pieces on the ground. And that's what I was trying to tell you, that I didn't find it, that it's the broken pieces on the ground. It, I'm thinking, like you were saying, it's, it's the panels that they're neglecting. They, they're, they're, they're broken, or it's poor, in this poor maintenance on that part, that would be causing them the, and one year y'all were running the some grass, all of a sudden, it's just like holding a magnifying glass, get the perfect angle. Little kid burned hands, kinda anything, and and, um, there, uh, what's it, last year, it was somewhere between ninety and a hundred various fires that y'all ran out.
Very small, it's a long time, yeah. Over investigations, smoke investigations, to actual fires, so.
So, are the, the calls coming from the people at the solar farm, or from neighbors?
Passed it by, hey, you got white smoke leaving out the solar farm, turn up, get their scrap. Lovely, most of them are calling before they got too big. Surround the, the woods on the western side of that go for a pretty good waves, and they've been unmaintained for a long period of time, they ever get fired in there, they haven't been able.
Do we have any options now on containment, or, or on, on deterrence?
As far as to enforcement wise, none that I can find, no.
So we could, we could do two hundred calls a year, or call a day, and, and we, we don't have any way to hold the company's feet to the fire?
Very, very sure. They have provided.
They, they have given, I mean, for our future. They're, they're owned they're owned by a foreign entity, um, or and they, they don't, essentially, they don't care. And they don't respond, um. There's just, and, and the, the people that are there that we'll talk to is, are, they're contracted people.
Yeah, they don't.
So they. And I don't know, they, so it's, it's leased land. Um, so I don't know if there's any sort of ramifications to hold to the actual landowner itself, who, you know, would own the land, uh, I'm not sure about that, where that would go. Versus the, the the C who operates, you know, the plant or not, uh, uh, you know, that's, that's legal questions beyond my skill set, but, um.
So.
But I don't know, I mean, at the end of the day, um, I think this year's been mild, but it, it, it has been and could continue to be a, a very big burden on, especially for the Ben Wheeler Fire Department, uh, it's, it's not something uh, for them, uh, what they were uh, i- i- as a department there in that community, what, what they were prepared to handle. It isn't a, a fault of the fire department for that area, you know, uh, for, for that type of facility, and uh, for a facility that come in, uh, they, they do not contribute uh, anything beyond their role tax base, uh, to, to assist them with anything, with, um.
When they first came in, they promised, well, great compensation promises, uh, gear, training, whatnot, and then that company sold it, we never got anything, the first goal, have this new guy, this guy did any complaints we had, it followed on dead feeders, and they were even profits, and we were repairing the equipment, and runs back and forth, but we were on skid, it was twenty-five grand, though, our pockets were empty. Excuse me, it's only dead game, so.
Since the last, uh, the, the large one, they have reached out to us, but it's kind of the same song that we heard last year, um, come, come to town, we'll meet with you, and we'll see what we can do now, but we heard that last year, too.
Well, this is gonna sound crazy, but uh, what if they had a fire on there, and y'all just monitored, to it wouldn't get out, just like burn?
Last call we got, they told us, do not come in, we got, do not come in here, don't come, oh, they found, we leave fifteen minutes later, we can call, it's happening.
And part of the problem with that, and, and I'm with the brand, but part of the problem is that, if those inside of those panels, there are chemicals and, and stuff that will become a hazard to the surrounding area. I mean, it, it, it does, the panels and electrical, as we get it on fire, I mean, we're going in, uh, EPA and everything, at that point, done. So.
And.
Allowing it to burn, could.
There's, when, when you end up with that kind of, if if you allow to burn in the fuel load to build, um, if they are going to do a planned stop, or defensive tactic on, okay, we're gonna let you burn, but we're gonna put a stop here on this property, because, you know, wind's blowing this way, it, they really better be ready to put a stop, 'cause it could build up enough of, of fuel load and, and run into them, that, um, I mean, by the time it gets to them, it, it could really be ripping and roaring, too, and then be something that you know, they end up, gets to them, they might not end up being prepared for, it, it just, you roll the dice.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if you let that happen, and it tears up all their equipment, uh, maybe you'll think twice about next time about.
Yeah, in, in, in perfect world, it's, it's, you know, you would think, why, heck yeah, I mean, that'll show them, right? But like you said, you, you've got an environmental release that's happening, and then not to mention, um, the potential of endangering their lives, um, if, if it's something that they're unprepared to handle by the, the fuel load that develops.
Listen, it's like, like y'all were talking about, that's all me, and my young guy standing in the smoke, waiting on it to get there, breathing this stuff until it finally breathing, it's not fair to us to sacrifice our health and stuff for their profits, that we're not getting any aid whatsoever. Can I make your comment?
Sure.
I mean, the idea of let it burn is one way to take it, these LLCs, the way they're designed, all they gotta do is just pay and practice to walk away, then the county's gotta deal with what's left, because they will walk away from it. And this is not the this is not my opinion, is this is not a situation of just this facility. They've got to notice a proceeding for another facility in, uh, in precinct two, that's fixing to start probably in the next couple of months. They've got one that's gone, up there to walk, and that is on inactive at the moment, but they're still doing something, and it's gonna go active again, probably in a month. So, Van Zandt County has two more of this to deal with. So it's kind of a bigger thing.
Well, the, the, the situation is, which David, you're, you're well aware, is the state legislature does not give the county the, uh, power to regulate or to, uh, impose, uh, of people on, on their land, and how they, they monitor, even if it is environmental, if it's something environmental, then it goes to one of the state agencies that has to monitor it and has to enforce it. And, uh, our hands are, you know, we can't, we can't zone, we can't pass, uh, regulations about how they do it uh, in that regard, and I did, I did talk to a tack, and the, the o- only option that we really have is to take it to the district judge. And if the district judge, uh, can, can shut them down, if it's deemed that, uh, that there being a nuisance.
And County Code Report Seventeen talks about when, which is what this event finally did, and I would bet I've been watching for it. It never would have happened, it got outside their fence line, so you've now damaged other people's property, which does allow you to get, or, or the fire marshal to get the state involved to investigate. Will they do anything? I don't know. The county, county code, our state code system, you can ask me.
Okay, well, we've asked for an investigation, he's, he's given us an investigation.
I mean, the state level, state.
At the state level, state fire marshal. And, uh, what, what would you expect to come from that?
It's awesome, I, it's better than doing nothing.
Okay. Yes, sir, JD.
Hi, good afternoon, uh, I'm JD, I'm the president of Brad County, but, um, I'm an attorney, and I, one of the things the chief said with, uh, the, uh, the landowner kind of stuck out, because uh, what, when the liability falls on the premise owner, and so well, who ends up paying the cost of it, that's generally not in the leasing, whether there's indemnification, et cetera, so the, the county could civilly sue, uh, the landowners, potentially also get an injunction on addition of the nuisance of the yard.
So the county could sue civilly, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Orlando.
And figure it's going on to others', uh, property, causing damage, and, you know, repaying expenses, the county's out as a result of their continued negligence. Because you can have property, but you can't affect, uh, the folks around you.
So the, the, in essence, the landowners are responsible for what the lease company is doing with their land.
I would sue the company and the premise owner. Uh, but here, I mean, the, ultimately, it falls on the premise owner, but it, he's he's generally got an agreement where the contractor's, is the one supposed to pay all the, the legal costs, et cetera. And so we could, uh, get, through the scuffle of contract between, uh, the premise owner and the entity, uh, figure it out that way.
Okay, alright. That, that's an option we can pursue, or we can look at, look into.
Um, I hear there's a couple of something else. I would like to see the county do something because, as our chief said, that gathering to the west, it makes that, makes it on, you start harming people, structure, whatever, someone kind of will go well, you knew about this.
Okay, well.
Well, let, let's get something straight. This court has no authority to do anything out there. Now, I can go out there personally with you, and I can fight it all day long, but Van Zandt County cannot go out there, they don't have the power to go out there and do that. Now, if we can request a, uh, an investigation, I'm for it, I can get, get it done.
Ask them that, or you've got a civil protest, I mean, you've got. You know, at what point in time does some of this firing, it becomes something that could.
The simple deal would have to go to the DA, she's our civil attorney officer. So that would have to go to her and to see what, what she decides. Uh, if, if she wants to sue, go for it, we're not at nothing, Van Zandt County is not responsible for the fire protection within the county.
Think what they meant, not the court, but the county knew about it, not necessarily, that was where I federated, but it's a state house. And, and there is something that we can do. We should do it, maybe not, not this court, but the county.
Right.
So, per code, the judge would recommend.
I can do what?
The district.
The district court, district judge, I can't do anything. I, I have it myself, or you wanna explain, please explain to me what it is I can do as the county judge.
Request is state fire marshal, uh, investigation, yes, that's all you can do, but you can do that.
Okay, alright.
So I have great working relationships with the state fire marshal, even. The, the rep, representative for our district. Um, I'm close friends with the assistant state fire marshal who used to be the fire marshal for this county. Um, when I called him and say, hey, would you come investigate the fire that I've already investigated? He's first of all gonna laugh at it. And his next question is, he's gonna say, what do you want me to do? Uh, I mean, that's, that's gonna be their response, and what do you want me to do? You've already looked at it, I mean, um. There, there's gonna be pushback from them, I'm just, I mean, I know them, I, I go, I mean, I attend training with them. Uh, we, we, I won't say we talk on the weekly or maybe even the monthly, but we. We talk and we, we just, we check in on each other, hey, what's going on, I mean, we, we see each other, so, um. I mean, I live in the same town as, as the other, our, I've got two, our kid, it's the same age as you, kid. I mean, we, we hang out sometimes even, and I mean, it's, I know him, sure. And, and that's gonna be his life. What am I gonna do for you? I mean, I, I've got an investigation, um. And there. At the least, the minimum you can do is you can make it a record. Cause the same problem we had in the past session when we got.
How about, how about we just pass a resolution, like work, David?
Who would be able, like the, the gentleman back there said, you know, it could be the leasee. The landowner or the owner of the solar contract, if you wanted to take it to district, to district court and have a civil suit, who is responsible to get it there?
The district attorney.
Right, the district attorney, the officer.
And I've seen a lot of those lease agreements, I have not specifically seen this one, so I can't speak to it, but virtually every single one of them has the. Sole facility identified from any issues, so yes, it does fall back to. Who is the landlord, it's the same problem I'm talking about, just let them park. They all season go away, landowners, we suck a bunch of garbage, where they're gonna do, they're gonna pay, if they decide they're gonna pay for it themselves. Then clean up those to the county.
No, it don't either, Dave, that cleanup don't, it goes to TCEQ, it don't go to county.
Okay, who needs a bank for, uh, and.
Well, it may do it, and I'm not for solar farm. Keith Pearson, Keith Pearson hung his head up, I'm not Keith Pearson in the Bixley right now, I'm Keith Pearson commissioner right now. And you cannot, this court cannot do anything about it, we can't tell them not to come, we don't have to give them tax abatements. We've been through this before, we don't have to help them come, but we cannot stop them from coming.
But, the fire marshal's suggestion. About the premise owner, I think is a very good idea, what you can. Force them to do versus not force them to do, I don't know, but if a minute. Property is damaged outside of the facility. We've got a bigger problem.
The property owners outside that facility is the one that'll be suing that lawsuit.
And Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but your investigation just determines that the fire started wrongfully. Then left their property and got on the adjacent property and caused X, Y, Z damage, correct?
It, sixty.
And then that property owner can sue for whatever X, Y, Z damage is.
That's correct.
Yes, I mean, and so.
Now, do you have the ability to write a ticket just cause it left their property and got on the neighbor's property?
Yes, but it's not common practice because the determination of the fire is an accidental fire. It's not, you know, in, in the. You know, when you're looking at it compared to all the other fires, that, that would be an accidental fire. You know, if, if, if that, if that was put in court compared to any other case. That's gonna compare as an accidental fire, I mean, if you, if you say, you, you know, I mean. It, it's, it's an accident, it was equipment failure, it was just. I mean, is somebody liable? Sure, I mean, we're, we live in a world of liability. Yes, but that's a simple liability, that's not a criminal liability.
But it's happening on multiple occasions, though.
Do what?
But it's happening on multiple occasions.
Sure, it is, and I mean, so I'm not. What I'm saying is though, is it's not in a, it, it's, there's no criminal. He doesn't meet the intent for criminal liability for me to. To charge with an arson charge or. A, a reckless damage charge because there's no, doesn't meet the intent in the code of criminal procedure for that. But. There is, there could be civil liability because of failure to maintain their equipment or their. Land or something like that, that could be proven in court in the civil trial, I, but. So, I don't do civil, so I'm, I'm, my job as county fire marshal is to determine criminal. I go to the point of my investigation to see that, no, there is no criminal activity here. And then we stop wasting tax money at that point.
And so the state fire marshal's office, if you called in, would do nothing more than what you've done, which established it started here across the line, and that's what they did. That, that's all.
We didn't sit here and talk about it all day, but I don't, not saying this court, saying the county, if we have the power. If we don't do anything and it keeps on happening, this is gonna stay the same, something's gonna have to happen. Whether. The DA gets involved with the, with the district court or you have the, and what if the. Landowners to decide, what, what if they don't have enough money to, uh, have a civil defense against them, I mean, cause you ain't gonna have enough money to defend them. And they're, they're not gonna be able to go against them.
And, and the majority, it looked like the majority of property that was burned is a liability, I don't know who owns. The property that was, um. You know, but it looked, I mean, it was under transmission lines.
Well, it's all, it's all, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm involved, it's by my house too, kinda, it's by, I'm north by Queens too.
So, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, and I don't know, so I don't know who all. But, I mean. It, it did get into property lines, but, you know, so that would be. On, but you know.
It's still a part of that property and beyond that easement where it probably, probably does or let it make.
And, and I don't know. Here's the other thing, if, if somebody were to say, man, that was my hay, and, and I was fixing to make my cut and, and I make. You know, ten thousand dollars a year on that hay, you know, and everything, and I just lost that. But that was all milkweed and stuff out there, that wasn't anything though significant. That wasn't a great. Uh, you know, not to knock any lines faster, but it wasn't like it was. Prime grazing land that was fixing to be cut for something or.
That's not for you to judge.
I know, it's not, it's not, but.
The point is that there wasn't enough agony to justify a lawsuit over it.
That's right.
Yes, that's, that's my point, is the, the value of it is like, what, where's your monetary faults?
Yeah, you gotta prove damages.
Well, the county has no, no authority to, to do anything to them about it, but unfortunately, I wish we did, I'd be glad to jump on board in a hurry. We don't have a municipality entity to do anything about it. The only other thing that would have any teeth and do anything would be an ESD. I know y'all looked for one of those a few years back, have y'all considered that again?
How would that? I mean, I, I just don't know, I mean.
Well, then at least that, that company would be paying that ESD tax.
At least it's taxed, and then they have the ability to do fire codes and, and bill and stuff like that, I mean, they, they got more authority than us.
Is, is there, I mean, I know this one's behind the eight ball because it's here and it exists. Is there not something forward for future sites? The county, the resolution, the ordinance or something that the county can adopt that we say it has to be to a standard?
We cannot regulate, we cannot regulate land.
I wish.
Use, land use, we can't do zoning.
I mean, we do subdivision standards, we, I mean, we tell them, if you're gonna build a subdivision, your road has to be to this specification.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you gotta have this, that and the other.
It's cause the legislature allows us to do that, or actually, they, they. They put it in our lap to do it. And well, as well as the septic stuff, the septic, uh, systems. Are for us to.
I just.
But, but as far as anything.
It really is, cause I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm with you and everybody else here, I mean, I, I feel their. Frustration and, you know, it's, it's taxing on them. Um, to, to be. Using their equipment and services for this when it's intended for their community. That's who pays for that equipment and their service and not. Not for them to expend it on a, a place that could care less if they exist or not.
Well, what's gonna happen, like Quinn said, when it happens, somebody putting out a fire and it gets a reservoir water, reservoir gets down and kills them. Who's responsible for that?
Transform your DC goal, present a red, uh, that's not an AC or.
I mean, do we just wait, no, it just won't follow, I mean, who's, who's gonna be responsible for that when that happens?
I'm solar farming.
Kind of like the lights going up on the corner, somebody's got it, we'll do something about it.
Essentially, uh, from my understanding, the attorney here basically, um, followed this correctly. They get to reap all the profits, and it sounds to me like the landowners are the ones that are actually carrying the liability, you say?
That may right up, that may or not, may not be the case, we need to, we'll look at the, uh, we'll look at the lease agreement between them, and they're typically recorded instruments. And once we've taken a look at the lease agreement between them, the indemnity portion in there usually will determine who's responsible for that. And the, w- once you've determined that, then. Uh, you know, my question to, uh, to the district attorney is whether or not the volunteer fire department, um, can, you know, can file a nuisance. Or, or a negligence, uh, claim against the LLC. And while that may be the case, that i- if you let this, if you let a facility burn up, they've got insurance on it, they won't share who it is. But they've got insurance on it and they're simply gonna make a claim and, a- and then they very well could put that money elsewhere and fold up that operation, go somewhere else. But, uh, anytime an LLC, uh, is faced with having to defend a claim in Van Zandt County, they're gonna have to hire counsel. Out of Dallas or Tyler, they're gonna have to spend a, a pretty good amount of money. So if they begin to see that either the volunteer fire department or any of the other agencies here, whether. Um, that those volun, that, that, that those agencies are gonna begin fighting back. Then they may begin to look a little closer at their maintenance and, and the contracts that they have there and make sure that their. Facility is, is taken care of, and it may provide a little bit of future experience to those companies that are coming in to say. Uh, we'd better be careful in Van Zandt County because they're, that, they're active and they'll come after us if we, if we don't keep our facility up.
I would, we're gonna, it may be a new question for y'all, but what would the court like to see happen?
At this point, I think we're under the impression that we have very few resources available to us and that the, that the most likely scenario is a civil case. Between somebody that's been wronged and harmed and, and, and if, and has been mentioned already, if, if the grass burns. Uh, a- and ten acres burns, um, what's the actual damage of that, little or none? The only people right now that have actual damage, uh, is the volunteer fire department.
Um, for the fire department, Dan, I've discussed this quite a bit, and what we'd like to see is, uh, one of the county's county building. Prevention, funding, and education. You know, uh, we need to know about what we're dealing with out there. We're not in solar difference, we don't own it, but.
That would be on states regulate those. Companies to do that, right?
That would be part of your contract, boy, I have to do that. All, all that name and training on the minutes.
And you'll check with the property owners if there's anything in their lease agreement that would have you.
One, uh, decision, I know one of the persons, so I'll get a copy of their agreement, say most of all.
There were two, oh, good.
They should probably be serious.
If they were aware that they could have some liability, they may take a more proactive stance.
And I don't think they're aware of it. I think one, for sure.
Beautiful, I'm glad.
They could at least provide a copy of their agreements if they're, if they're, if a memorandum of, of, uh, of lease is all that's recorded, then we. Then we'd have to fall back to them or to the, uh, lessee to determine what's actually in the contract as it relates to indemnification.
I have a clarification for what I wrote in state legislature, legislate. Counties don't have the rights to ban solar farms, so there is nothing that says that you can't regulate them. And there is code, the NPA, which we fall under, uh, eight, I think it's eighty five or eight fifty five, that regulates solar energy systems. Um, so that might be an option too. Because we're already following our NPA codes that we have in the state. Um, but the county looks to adopt that code and that would allow us to regulate on the fire safety side. Um, and maybe require permits and have them follow at least that safety code. Which would allow fire departments to get training. Past solar farms that I've done in past counties, the company was required to train fire personnel in those districts, how to respond. And a lot of them were also required to have their own firefighting equipment on site and staff, which didn't respond as well. So, from what I read, you can't ban them, but there's nothing that says we can't regulate them, cause there are codes already getting placed in the National Fire Protection Association. That allow us to regulate what they do.
Well, that's also gonna give me, uh, that you have a sign, I said it there, that you have this free reading. Uh, a lot of these little fires we've been going out to. Take care of that spray rate in five minutes. Yeah. And by the time we get there, it's been burned fifteen minutes.
Well. Well, we'll research it, I don't, uh. The NAFP, what is that, that is a. Okay. And, um, does our county adopt certain codes? Or are they just, does the state have codes that are in place? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, you say regulate them, who, who's responsible for enforcing and the regulation of those codes?
We're, we're responsible for the enforcement of, but, I mean, we can elect to adopt. The NFPA standards that fall under. Uh, we just can't adopt. And, and we can, I mean, because of our county's proximity to, uh. Kaufman County and their population, uh, we can adopt international fire codes. Um, and, and we can even adopt, uh, building codes if we so choose, we just have to have. Personnel to enforce them, there's no sense in adopting those codes. If we don't have the structure, infrastructure to enforce them, um. But any of those standards can be, we can adopt them as they, as they say, we can adopt them with amendments, which is the wiser thing to do is to. Review them and then adopt them with amendments that suit our county. Um, and, and so that they're built for us, uh, and everything, but yet we can. We, we are able to review those NFPA standards and adopt it.
That's correct, we can, we can do that. But we can't single out and say we're gonna do it for solar farm only. You adopt the code and it covers everybody in the county. So that means if you wanna build a barn, you're gonna have to build it towards certain code. If, if, it's, if you. You, you can do that. And, and you have to have the personnel to police it. And, and all that, but you can't single out just something for one group.
Clarify what they use of about that, you said, uh, energy storage, correct? As opposed to, which is gonna be your best, your.
As opposed to, which is one of your best, your battery deals. As opposed to gener- to energy generation, or do they count solar or coal?
They're actually, so usually on solar farms, or I don't know how this was set up, but most solar farms. Create power and then that power has to be stored unless it's fed into a grid. So most solar farms that I've been in the past, they go through the solar panels, it goes to battery storage and then it goes to the grid.
That's what they're going to.
It's going to be great, so, but it's, it's energy being created, I mean, codes that they create regulate it as a group. It regulates it as a entity, so in past, when I invoked those codes, it's been for solar farms, battery storage. However, they're set up, it's, it's a regulation for that type of.
Solar panel on top of your house, it, 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 it covers everything.
They're actually separate, so one is a commercial code and the other is a residential code. Um, so the county does have a choice to adopt just commercial codes, if you would go through like international codes.
It, it depends on if they're selling that, that, if that residence is selling that power back to a power company, then it's commercial. If they're just running their own house with it, it's not commercial. But if they generate more than what they're using and sells back to the power company, they're commercial.
That's not how that would work, so commercial would be like a solar farm. Um, and like, is there a, an LLC or corporation? And then a residence would be your private residence, so I, right now, we get calls all the time, people put swimming pools in. Solar panels on their roof, Quinn provides in their yard, like the little household ones, the county. You can choose to do, to adopt the residential code that allows us to go in and say, yeah, we're gonna permit swimming pools, we're gonna permit if you put solar panels on your roof. If you adopt the commercial codes, which is what the International Fire Code is, is for businesses. So if you have a business in the county, we decide you wanna add solar panels on your buildings and yes, you can permit that. But if you're a resident, unless you adopt the residential code, we cannot tell you what you can, can't do in your personal residence. On fire side of things, so commercial is commercial and then personal is residential, if that makes sense. I hope that clarified.
And much tone sense, but.
Yeah, so like a commercial project permitted through our office would be a solar farm. If you're putting a solar farm in or battery storage or something like that, where you're just putting in solar panels on your roof. I think I've run into three phone calls for that today, if companies coming in and putting solar panels on residential roofs and we don't permit that in the county. Don't have a code that supports that.
So. Where are we at? We're gonna check with Tonda, find out what, uh, what her thoughts are about civil litigation. And, uh, move forward, I don't, I don't know that, uh, requesting a, uh, investigation by a state fire marshal is going to accomplish anything at this point in time. But we will proceed forward with avenues of trying to, uh, uh, address each or several farm fires, I don't know how, but we will.
I look at that commercial code that she was talking about too.
Okay. Well, we, we know for a fact, if you don't have a commercial code, you don't have a residential code, you have nothing to enforce, so. And we have neither at this point in time. So if we, if we want to adopt a commercial residential, then we have to put in place the means of which to enforce that. So. And that's what we can do, we can, we can look at what we need to do to do that. All right, any other comments on solar farm fires? All right, we're now ready to move on to the second item, industrial battery storage facilities. And I don't know where the people are that's wanting to do a presentation. They asked to zoom in, I thought they were gonna be here, they sent us a presentation to look at. All right, well, apparently he thinks we're gonna do another meeting. Cause he doesn't wanna mix up the solar fires with this. Right. Is there such equipment? What is, what equipment is required?
Here to protect the individual from the toxic gases, they're not coffee, and these are the whole. Very toxic and they are very explosive. It's not simple, have you ever seen Tesla's car boil cracker in the ground? Imagine that.
The caution in the emergency response section of this, uh, of the information they sent over specifically says. Thermal runaway fire, direct application of water to lithium ion batteries only delays the eventual combustion of the entirety of the unit. Protect adjacent exposure if needed and do not use water unless there's an imminent danger to human life. Or authorized by site management. They further go on to say that, uh, they do not actively fight the fire and they, uh, uh, they do, uh, a fire alarm monitoring. Provided that that fire alarm monitoring cellular dialer, uh, is working.
So.
Agreeing that, and they also talk about off casting. Which is another critical piece of that, which is not toxic, it's all explosive.
I'll look forward to hearing their, uh, presentation when they, when they come in, in meantime, I think. You know, it, it'll be, uh, incumbent upon us to determine what layers of protection we can provide to the people.
Well, what, what do we do right now with car fires, electric vehicle fires? Stand back, let it burn. Okay.
Uh, then you can pull over the car, there's probably a, subjugated, but, uh.
With this, I'll matter to you, there's no time from the point of ignition to explode. It's gonna be seconds to get out.
So I've been trying to, I've been speaking with R E S, who is the company that, um, is, was supposed to do the presentation today. Uh, for this battery storage facility in the county, they reached out to our office for potential permitting and regulations on this storage facility. Um, there are implodes battery cells, um, that have fire suppression within them. It's an oxygen depletion system, so the buildings lock down so that firefighters cannot access the buildings. Um, there's an alarm that goes off to let people know to get out because it does suck the oxygen out. They have studies that they've done, which they'll show in their presentation that shows that it doesn't let it get past three battery runaway. Um, it actually puts the fire out and they train all fire personnel, they do several trainings, uh, with fire personnel. That let them know we have all voluntary departments in the county, which ever changing, um, responders. And they have firefighting crews on site as well when these fires do occur, but they are notified. Uh, per their cell phones on the fire alarm as well, uh, when something happens. And they do have local people that will respond.
I think my concern is, is that R E S may install this and, and get it approved and get it in operation. And then they'll sell it to the folks in Ben Wheeler.
No, they're gonna be training you on pretty much exposure control and then they will have response crews that come out to pretty much keep you away. Um, and then they are responsible, from what he told me, they're responsible for the cleanup and again, that would be between the county and that's why it comes down to regulating. And being able to know what they're doing with these contracts, um, of cleanup. And if, you know, again, the liability of what happens if this facility goes up. The other thing is the property they're looking at currently does not have a nine one one address, it's a substation out off the, I think it's a private road. Um, and they're, they bought a cattle pasture, is what they bought behind the substation to install this. And from what I saw, looking at the, the satellite view, there is a gas line in the vicinity. Um, so that was a concern that I brought up to them, um, was how close it was to a gas pipeline in the area as well. So, um, again, like, there's no address out there, they kind of gave me a, a G P S coordinates, I was able to pull it up and see where it was at. And this is a relatively small storage facility, um, it sounds big, but it's about seventy eight containers. But we're talking, some of these facilities come in and put up to seven hundred containers, so this is like step one.
On the side, if you look at the geographical region in that area, that is also the headquarters of the Bakers River, they all converge around it.
Really, where's it at?
The one on forty seven, you mean?
Believe so. There's no address out there, like I said, I haven't been able to.
It's where the big, there's a big church that's on forty seven, that's right there nearby.
And that gas line facility is pioneer, and those are the gas and fuel lines coming from.
So with that commercial code, you're talking about the fire, does it roll over and tell me anything to do, does it have any? Regulations or whatever with battery facilities?
Yes, so in general, that energy storage, if it, I think, A I C also has one that covers solar farms and battery storage as well.
All right.
Five different sites.
All ever ranging in size. One of them has up to seven hundred containers that I've sold, full batteries, each Canadian full battery.
So you wanna outline where they're at, David, can you do that for us?
And you're the oldest, uh, Ben Wheeler, uh, B two on over, just wondering if I might force it to be one. Uh, they have one for these sites, it's converted and active, which is gonna be a solid deal, it's, uh.
Seven fifty one and thirty eight sixteen.
Uh, uh, and it's in perfection, uh, there is another one supposed to be down almost with the Smith County line. But I don't know the transmission station, but the rest, and there's another one that's from, uh, almost Silver Springs town, so it's gonna be that.
And I only have three of those companies on that, of the five.
And man, there's one of them.
I've only had three, you're chalked.
Well, something don't get done, this is, it's gonna hurt development, this county, economic development. You got five of them coming here.
That we know about.
Yeah, that we know about, I mean, this'll just be the storage facility of these.
In my understanding, as the legislature has changed to now, whenever they put a solar farm in, or they, they are, uh, required to have storage facilities, uh, to store the battery. If they're gonna, if they're gonna generate the power, they gotta have battery storage facilities to hold it for off peak times. So. All right, anything else on? Like, I assume we will, uh, get better communication on the, the, uh, storage facility, uh, in another workshop. So that leaves you, leaves us up to you, J D, you're up. I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't know if the firemen really wanna stay for this presentation, it's about. It's about mediation, judicial mediation. You bet, thank you for coming out.
Thank you, sir. Sorry that I jumped out. Good afternoon again, uh, my name's J D Goodmore, I'm an attorney in, uh, Gray County, um. From, uh, I've been a lawyer for twenty years now, but I've actually been a mediator longer, my whole career's been li- litigation, but. I've always had a passion for mediation, uh, even in law school, and I, I went to South Texas Caldwell in Houston. And I started the first student organization, uh, A D R Advocates. Uh, just because I, what I learned about mediation from, uh, Justice Evans, who, uh, was one of the founders of the Texas A D R Act. But also my professors, it is just a, uh, I love peacekeeping more than, than fighting, I believe it or not. Um, and it is a great tool for any community, but. This has historically been something that counties could do, uh, since eighty seven, Commissioner's Court's been able to order the establishment of a county that. Well, let's start, actually, from the beginning, the, the preface is important because what I've found talking to, uh, uh, Commissioner's Court side girls is. What is A D R, uh, generally everybody knows what mediation is, assume, uh. Well, you're gonna hear a lot of reference to A D R, uh, means alternative dispute resolution. And mediation is by far the most popular, most, uh, used procedure, A D R procedure, so. When you hear me say A D R, I'm talking about mediation, uh, so there was. Since, like I was saying, since eighty seven, there's been authority to have this, a county mediation system, but. Historically as well, there hasn't been any funding to do it, that's why, you know, uh, really. Today, there's still only sixty one, but of the two hundred and fifty four counties, sixty one, nine, uh, forty one of those counties are ran through a multi-county, uh, dispute resolution system because they can't afford it. By the bigger counties like Harris County, for instance, they, uh, since eighty seven, they've had the system in place. Um, which has been ran by, uh, all volunteers, um, but that's. Creates a lot of work for just smaller counties with not that many cases or resources to say, we're gonna have a system based all on volunteers and. The kindness that everybody's heart, um. Thankfully, uh, as somebody who loves mediation, um, chapter one thirty five, which, uh, originated in Senate of, uh, forty one. In the eighty seventh, uh, legislature, it requires every county, uh, to set up fourteen, uh, county funds. Some already existed, but, uh, required every time a case gets filed in justice court, uh, district court, county court, uh. All that money is allocated by percentage to fourteen different funds and one of those funds is the A D R fund. Is the only fund that has a loophole, that has a contingency to keep the money allocated to it. Uh, and it's an, it's an easy fix, I, I feel like this is just a situation where, you know, they pass something and they don't come down and really tell you about it. But, uh, the loophole is, you, you, well, you, like all the counties that call. Do not have established, uh, dispute resolution system. And when I say established, that doesn't mean, okay, well, I hereby order it established and next thing, uh, mediation can get referred tomorrow. That, that'd be impossible, uh, but finally, through, uh, chapter one thirty five, every quarter, you get to keep. Uh, believe it comes out to, well, let me back up. When I moved back to Longview, uh, this was last month. I, the first thing I did was look at both Harrison and Gray County, because I'm a weird hybrid of those places. I, I reached out to their treasurer and I said, hey, hey, how much you wanna give back to the state? And this is because I started, um, my pursuit against, uh, to help counties back in. Twenty twenty two, I, from Missouri County, I was down there, um, you know, I think they had gotten in trouble and mishandling some funds. But I was down there for about eight months, um, just kind of learning the law, but at that time, there was only. You know, we're talking about two quarters, so they weren't able to see the actual financial consequences of not. Uh, seeing the problem and doing something about it, uh, I did the same, uh, request with y'all's treasurer or auditor. And there was, y'all giving back since Jan- during the time period of January first of twenty two through June of this year. Y'all giving back a little bit over forty five thousand dollars, uh, that might not seem like a lot, but I mean, to a lot of people, that is a lot of money. Um, and then so I was talking with Judge Stout, the Gray County judge, and you know, I kinda talked about something combined in Harrison. And then so I was talking with Judge Stout, the Gray County judge, and you know, I kind of talked about something combined Harrison and Greg and. Uh, you know, I don't, I, full disclosure, I don't know much about that call until recently. And he said, that call would be something perfect for this. And because I guess what that sets up is. You know, a part of these systems ultimately administration. And so we'll get to that, but that's the reason I'm here today. Is because, you know, all these counties, uh, have the money just sitting there and, uh, it's a really easy fix. Um, if you turn to the second part, um, of.
First, first of all, can you explain why we have the money sitting there?
Well, it's not sit back, actually sitting, every quarter you send it to the state, um, because you don't have a system. And all it takes is this court to say, I hereby order the system established. You do that before the end of the year, you start retaining the, those funds as of this quarter. And my proposal is at a minimum, all counties save for a full financial calendar. Meaning, you know, until the, uh, end of September, y'all are just gonna be saving money. But also here me guide y'all the path of what do we do with this money once we have enough? You know, um, and then here you see those examples, like the most, uh, traditional, uh. System was something called settlement week, uh, during the, uh, judicial conference, all the judges go to Austin. And, uh, you know, this, uh, the statute was written for, uh, counties of a hundred and fifty K or more. But it, it's perfect for this. Just as an example, because really the world is your wish, your ask exactly what you want to do with it. But every week or that week, which is generally around September. The, the courts send whatever cases they want to send. If they don't want to send any, that's fine, but they send them down there. And, you know, mediators come there and for all week long, they just mediate and settle cases. And generally the success rate on mediation is about seventy percent. Um.
Are those the multiple cases?
Yes, sir. There is the, you could broaden this, uh, to handle criminal stuff, but that's getting, uh. Too much into the weeds. Uh, I, I feel like the, the mediation approach is the simplest way to. To really, and the best way to use the system. Um, but if you look at, uh. One of the Harrison County, I worked with them, they, uh, actually ordered the establishment of their system, uh, two weeks ago. And I learned a lot, you know, uh. Talking to the, the clerks, uh, the hearing of the J P's, you know, someone makes a waste of time, I don't need this, et cetera. And all that kind of stuff, all the questioning of, well, why would we do this? That itself is evidence of why you need a savings period. To figure out, to do your due diligence, research, development, to decide what is the best system for me. And, you know, based on my math, uh, well, I, I could excel most credit. Uh, y'all would have a budget around twenty-five hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year to use. And so.
Twenty-five hundred, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand. Yes, sir. Um, and once, if you look at that chart on the, I mean, the second portion there, the. So I got all the, these numbers from the comptroller, my, uh, Public Information Act request is, uh, behind it. But I saw I'm basing that number, got the totals, uh, in the first column and then the yearly average. And what I did there is I just, I just, uh, the total amounts were over ten quarters, so I invited by, uh, well, actually I don't. Want to reveal that in that, but trust me, it's, it comes out to, um. Well, sorry, about eighteen. So still twenty is, it's planned. Here's, here's one, if you look. Sorry, jumped around here, but I have three examples. If you jump back, and that's on the, uh, green tab, uh, section four. And, you know, I already kind of told you about the timing of the county settlement week, you know, the eligibility of cases. That to the courts, um. Y'all set, you know, the, the basic standards of certified mediator and all the, uh, potential places in the county, uh, you know. At no cost, your, you know, your courthouse, et cetera, particularly when the judges are gone. But if you look at. Okay, this is the budget of twenty-one, uh, thousand, five hundred dollars. And with that, that's comes out to sixty-six mediations. So just there, not sixty-six, might not seem a lot, but that's, that's a lot of mediations. And you talk about seven percent, uh. Success rate that were closer to fifty cases off the, the docket. Um, I included in the side, a little, uh, printout from the, uh. The, uh, the office of the court, sorry. Well, J P activity, uh, is what I printed out for y'all, because this is nothing against the J P's why I included this. Cause it shows how many cases come in and how many they get out, which is a lot. But at the end of the day, they're still that, uh, log at the end, you know, just sitting there. There's still fifteen, around fifteen hundred cases. Uh, at the end of every year, despite moving through around three thousand. So at a minimum, as far as I, we don't. This justification, as you have cases that could go there. But let's say the county says, you know what, we don't want it for the J P courts, our district judge or our county judge. They said it would be amazing for their docket, clear it up, you know. It is, uh, there's just, there's a lot of work to do because it's important to poll the judges. Uh, that's a part of research, uh, et cetera. Uh, but, but this lays out is kind of your. You could use this, let's say there was any concern from, well, as a state, you're gonna come and look into this and say, oh, you know, or you're gonna get in trouble. You, when you establish it by order, you could put this little packet as exhibited. I, in this, uh, you'll see, I have a question there. I'm so confident about this that I'm willing to defend y'all against any, uh, tax from the state. Uh. It's just my passion to mediation. I have no financial stake in this. My, uh, law firm or mediation firm. Uh, Texas Resolution P L C has nothing, uh, to do with this. I'm not involved with Edco. Uh, if it works out with Edco, great. I'm here, you know, like in, um, like the five o'clock, Jim, we started with the. The, you know, the world's on fire story and I'm ending it with really the story of a good Samaritan. Just trying to do something good with nothing involved at all. Uh, coming home, I felt it was important to get back to the community, uh, not show up just ready to take it. And through just, uh, the judges in Harrison and Gray County, I'm here today, uh, because I'm such an advocate of it. And it's otherwise you're just, you're letting, you know, money just go out the door. I mean, it is not, this is important, this is not a tax or a grant. This is filing fees from litigants. So anybody who files a lawsuit in this county, it's built in a little bit, uh. To go towards mediation, et cetera.
Is that a standard fee that the state sets?
It's a percentage allocation. Whenever, uh, chapter one thirty-five came out, uh, effective January one twenty-two. Requires fourteen funds that every county has and a percentage allocation, uh, by case type to each of those funds.
So let me see if I understand this, the, the overall. So you have two people that are in a dispute. And, uh, they want to file a civil lawsuit, whether it's at the J P or it's in the county court. Uh, or if it's large enough and it's filed in the district court. And, uh, between those two litigants, the judge would take a look at the case. Now, when they file that, they file a filing fee, correct? And when they file that filing fee, uh, the, the treasurer and the auditors split that filing fee that they have to pay. That's required in every case. They split it into fourteen different areas and put a percentage of it based on what's in the, in, in the government code. Into these different areas. And right now, the, our A D R area that. The citizens of Van Zach County or those that litigate in Van Zach County, they send that A D R money. The auditors and the treasurers send that to the state. And, and that's money, you're saying that's money that we could use to establish our own mediation. And it's alternative dispute resolution. So it could be arbitration, mediation and, you know, several different areas, but mediation is the most common. So that if the judge looks at that case where the filing fee has been filed, as it is in all of them. And, uh, then the, the judge could say, in J P or county court or district. They could say, you know what, this is a good case here. Uh, where I don't think these litigants really know what the law is and, and this could be. A, an expensive venture for them. I'm going to recommend that it go to the. The Van Zach County A D R Alternative Dispute Resolution Group. And they will mediate either a half day or a full day. And the, that agreement typically is a binding agreement that then goes back to the judge and the judge signs off on it. And he clears that off his docket without having to get a jury and, and having to, you know, have discovery and all the rest of this business. Uh, that would normally be associated with this case. So what you're saying is this is money that's already being paid. That we're sending to the state that we could keep here by establishing this group. And the judges would determine which cases they should send over. Now, it's possible they don't. They don't settle at your, at, 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 uh, at mediation. If it doesn't, then it just goes back. It's not a substantial difference. It's a savings of money. Uh, and, and so how does the, how, how are you helping us to establish? Our A D R group here? How does that look?
Well, first things first is, I mean, I even have a ghost order in there, but it's just ordering the establishment to keep the money.
And who is? So you're saying that we would put applications out for five attorneys, say that's, it's kind of. Five attorneys to be the mediators. Uh, four, four Van Zach County or, or three, or how, how does that look?
No, I mean, you could create a county office that is, uh, you've got three mediators.
It's funded by this and it's not coming out of our general budget.
Right, it's exactly. But it is, though it's money that y'all can't do anything else with. As, as it goes to the state, or you do something that will help the courts and allow access, more access to the.
So two years go by and we've accumulated, you know, in this case, uh, over, over just over two years was, it was forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And that would be i- in, in your proposal is, is that you're going to pay these mediators. For a half a day or a day out of this fund. Um, and, and the, and do the litigants in, in this A D R program, do they contribute a portion to their mediation?
It disrupts. I feel like, you know, but if you have judges that have had discretion for almost forty years to send in some mediation, they haven't because. Litigants won't complain about the cost. And this, my proposal would be the mediations being provided, there are no costs of litigants. Uh, the medias are paid and then there's no harm, no foul. I mean, you can't, the judge, you know, again, it's. You could ask for mediation, the judge could say, I don't believe that, so I'm, I'm not sending you there.
So you're saying that the, the county court, uh, I mean, the, the Commissioners Court oversees the program. And it's kind of a standalone program. It could have, you know, uh, uh, help from the local bar association. And the, and the, but the Commissioners Court would determine what our pay rates are related to the mediations and arbitrations that. That the judges have decided to send. This is a good case that would go before this mediation, uh, the, these media, mediation attorneys.
Or, I mean, that's kind of one thing that gets lost. So you don't have to be an attorney to be a mediator. So the third example I used. You know, say, okay, we don't need to refer any cases. You can use that money to train, uh, ten, uh, qualified applicants. County officials, et cetera, to be certified mediators. You use that money just to train people to get certified. You know, there's all kinds of different things you can do with it. And, um, but it is completely y'all's discretion. To give you an idea, I think this is important of how, uh, of how loose this is. The one, there aren't any reporting required. Third, the state, I'm pretty sure they're delaying and getting back to me, my last. Information request, because they don't know. And it was, how much have counties that have had these systems in place? How much have they got to keep? I don't think they know, because you'll see in there, Harris County, they gave, they didn't mind sharing with me because I volunteered for their system. They shared with me that they had, uh, retained over three and a half million dollars.
But they can't use it for anything other than this program.
Correct, correct.
But it's not necessarily a help to the county, to the auditors or, or to the county budget. It's just retain money that we can use to help Van Zach residents with their disputes.
Correct. And all, the only change, uh, on the quarterly reporting form is line ten is now it's all zeros. I mean, that's why, you know, that form in there is from Harris County. And so that's why I, I don't think that, you know, the state even knows, but. Of, you know, collectively a hundred and ninety-three counties have given, uh, over six million dollars. And Harris County has kept more than half of what that is, you know, uh.
But it would, but it wouldn't it help the county? If you did that, you cleared the dockets and you wouldn't have to spend the money on the jury and time. I mean, I don't, I don't know how the justice system works that well, but since you're not doing as much up there, they're not clogged. You don't spend as much money up there.
I think I would, I think I would ask the judge's, uh, input on this. I think there are very, there, there are not a lot of cases. There's not any on the, on the criminal docket that I think that we'd want to jump into at this point, but there may be some on the J P level. Uh, my brother, um, is involved in a J P suit in Tarrant County and he's, he's required in Tarrant County to go through the A D R program. In Tarrant County before he can go on to the litigation. What are your thoughts? As it relates to reducing your, the size of your docket?
For, for me, this is a fixed problem I don't have. Every contested civil case I have, I refer litigation for me before it takes a court time. Uh, the vast majority of what I said, the family cases. And the, I can tell you, the primary mediator that we use on our family cases probably takes home. In a month of the referrals we make, what that forty-five thousand dollars in ten months is. He charges six hundred and fifty dollars a party in some of the, for a half day. For a half day, six fifty a party, some of those cases are multi-part cases. So it doesn't fix the problem in, in the docket because all of those cases are already being referred. Now, J P level, maybe.
Who pays this fee?
So that, that's a, that's an interesting, interesting thing too. Just so we're clear, there's no line item that either, uh, the courts director here pays for. Uh, several cases, the parties pay, CPS case, CPS has their own budget and CPS pays. For mediators. Every CPS case, if there's a loss, potential termination, parole rights go to. Engagement if parents are participating. So we're, we're not. We wouldn't be saving anything from a budgetary standpoint because we're not paying for it. The folks are paying. But the, the other, the other interesting part of it, I think exists is there, there is a very strong move. On a state level to, uh, eliminate the receipt of those filing fees. I think, and then I, I, I don't have, I suppose I do have access to it, but I don't have the, the numbers to see how it's affected. But our legislature and our high courts have put big pressure on us. To make more and more and more findings of indigency, especially at, uh, the J P and the small claims level. So these eviction suits, which are probably the most often civil cases that hear, um. Some of these, you know, minor contract things, somebody got messed around, overbuying a selling car or something like that. Many of those, we're seeing, uh, applications to waive the civil fees, just like we have for decades. On the criminal side, for court-like orders. And then even when it comes up from the J P level or, or the small claims world level. We'll see those same, uh, folks filing indigency applications to waive the county bill fees. Because there shouldn't be a filing fee at both levels and it gets peeled up. More are getting peeled up because our Supreme Court has now directed, uh, the J P level to tell, uh, litigants. To give them legal advice as a part of their judgments and tell them step by step what they have to do to them. And so mysteriously, more and more folks are, are following through with that. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I read your proposal today. I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about it. But I'll, I'll tell you my, my concern. Make a mistake, it didn't mean out. My, I, my concern is, is what I saw in this, this three operations post-establishment of a penalty law. And it's it's framed in a different way than I think. You know, how the judge upstairs would uh look at it. Then under B, it says, uh, judges and judges who pertains to dis- direct discretion. The referred pending cases are now referred specifically to the A D R system. Which affords additional statute of protection support. And that nulls a role against the A D R system, then considering on appeal that affects the case. Not something I've seen very often, I'll field them as sure as possible. But the second book, like, says no longer responsible to a twenty mediators or determine mediator qualification, compensation. I I think um it, one of the things we probably relate on after watching your last discussion. Is we're we're brought, as as a part of our job, we're brought these big problems to solve. And oftentimes, we have very limited tools in the toolbox that we can use to solve those problems. And in several cases, one of the things that has been most effective to me. Uh, has always been the ability to pick out a mediator that is maybe more appropriate for one case than another. I appointed, uh, for those of you that that know Judge Drum, I appointed Judge Drum on very specific cases. You may not not may not appreciate someone I appointed to. But Judge Drum has has a very unique perspective. Because of her sixteen years on on the bench, she can go in and talk to folks in a different way. And convey things to them sometimes that may help them in solving the process. A lot of our cases on the family side refer to Steve Watkins, a lawyer in in Brinkley. Who spends about as much time on the lawyer's offices around here on the square than he does in Brinkley. And he's a very, uh, he reminds me somewhat of a kindergarten teacher. He's got a lot of patience, he's got the ability to listen to things even when people are saying crazy stuff. And parties love to vent to him. So you have these parties that you see, really all they want is their opportunity for somebody to listen to the agreements. For them to get that out before you clear the system. Maybe that's the appropriate person uh for a particular case. Uh, similarly, we have on both of our lists, uh, some younger mediators. Uh, that we know just because they need the experience, they're qualified, they've gone through their training. Uh, you know, they've got certifications or whatever. But because they don't have those case numbers or mediable case numbers. We know that their rate is going to be much less than that six fifty it's up. And so having that ability uh to assign that sometimes has has made a difference. Uh, I think both Judge Martin and myself also, uh, since since this is all under that A D R umbrella. Uh, I think you also make it make use a lot of uh. A solid conference and a solid conference is just no mediator, no uh arbiter. Uh, they're sitting down at the same table, forcing to talk to each other. Uh, you've seen that sometimes uh here in this building, which we'll put them in this room when y'all are in session. Uh, back when the office space was back there, we used to ask, uh, wherever we could put them around here. Those things have always been options for us too and for use. But um, my concern would be the the taking away that tool from the toolkit. Because it's it's an important thing for us to have that ability sometimes to answer that. And uh, I I get that it's rough sending any money that we collect back to the state. Uh, I would like to keep as much of it here and specifically benefit us. If there's money coming into our county to benefit the county citizens, I see that as a thing. But I don't know that. This is the best way to compensate, so that's my piece and I'm I'm happy to listen to more and and I I sped right through this this afternoon with the docket.
We did a page then, thank you. And I appreciate those those comments. Uh, it, uh, I mean, there isn't mediator monopoly in a sense. What I, you know, folks along here have talked to, well, to get a good one, you gotta send them to Tyler, you gotta send them here or there. And, you know, they can charge those higher rates. One of the things that this could do is break the monopoly of mediators, which mediators might not like to hear what I I'm saying. Because that affects that everybody, the mediators could start getting paid a little more, uh, you know, same skill. And as to, uh, you know, uh, the judge prefers certain ways for certain cases. He can, he does not have to refer a case to the county A D R system. He can say you're going to go uh mediate with with so and so. Uh, that gives that ultimate discretion. And as to those uh younger mediators, you know, I, this is great for them. I mean, this could be, uh, we could create something that is just for those younger ones that that are getting all the other cases that provides them some income. I mean, this could be a paying job uh for those folks or, you know, just uh more, you know, supplemental income. But here's the, I mean, it it goes to the most important point. There's a lot to figure out. And over the next year, I'm offering on a pro bono basis to pretty much three options. One, county system just in Van Zant. Two, uh, broader system run through E T C O. Or three, hey, you know what? I don't want to have anything to do with this. And then you just terminate it and you send the money off. But there, I mean, over that year, I can come in front of y'all and say, the these are the different uh ways we could use that money. And, I mean, I would hate to see at the end of the year, y'all say, you know what? You, good luck, but uh, you know, I I'm that confident that I can, I can find ways that will benefit y'all's community. Uh, it's just, it's the, I think it's so flexible, the way this is written, that there isn't something that this money can be used for.
That's that's assuming they don't do away with the fees.
Well, they could change it to where, you know, the counties that have been sitting on a purse, they get to keep that money. You know, that they've just been sitting on, you know, they change it to where now it gets to be diverted to something else.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Josh, you said that, you know, we give them to mediators now and then go through the forty five thousand dollars in a month, what we got?
Yes.
If you and, if you and uh Martin are using that, what? Why isn't that, where's that forty five thousand, why isn't that forty five thousand dollars that we got not going to the mediators that y'all are using?
We don't have a plan. We don't have A D R.
Oh, you, because you have to have a plan for that night, okay.
So they they've made it where there's a modus operandi. When I first started practicing, oh, like in the last century. Uh, they they had it where when you got a receipt, you file in a case, first of all, I did it by paper. But you file in a case, you get a receipt and there were so many things listed there. And each each type of case has its own thing. Like probate cases, they have a special, uh, the the county gets two dollars every time he signs it up probate. There is a a signature fee in the law for things like proven an inventory or grant a letter of testamentary or whatever. And so it used to be each one had this long receipt line item for this and this much goes to law operating fund, this much goes to defense. Re- recruitment, this one is is the basic civil filing fee or whatever. And now they've made it where there's kind of a homogenous, so this is how much a civil case costs. And of that, then that's where this percentage comes in. And they put the effort on her, this essentially to 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 divide it out. And send all of these to the all all the different places.
So if you had the plan and say you ran out of forty forty five thousand dollars, you ran out of it with it with then.
But I'm not currently spending anything.
Because all the mediated fees are.
This would just.
I think the parties pay for it if I see that they can pay for it and if they can't pay for it, I'm having them go and do processes that don't cost money.
So this would just help the.
The situation where money has gone, yes.
The money is going to the state. Is there a channel for that to come back?
No.
Not currently.
They use it towards a statewide, like trying to.
Filing system.
Yeah.
So so this forty five thousand then would just simply go could go to help reduce some of the burden on the current mediated cases.
I mean, you could save for twenty years and build the dispute resolution center. That could be your plan.
Yeah, we could just can continue to collect it and they can continue to do what they're doing. And then at some point in time, we can figure out if we need.
Y'all say you're just sitting there.
Give you an idea, I'm, I don't want to name names, uh, because I don't want to.
No, go ahead.
One multi-county system, there is not a, it's ran through a a junior college, there's no uh contract involved. But these counties should collectively ease easily uh over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You know, because they responded to my request that this is how much, but we have a system. But these, uh, it's a hundred dollars is what the court sends for every mediation and that's it, but they have a system. So uh, the junior college don't get anything. I mean, uh, there is, the director gets a stipend, maybe like uh ten K a year. But that's a a tiny amount compared to what they're keeping. So the point being, it's Lucy Goose. You know, these counties are operating their system without any paperwork. You know, without any, this is our structure, this is how many cases I prefer, this is how many were successful, et cetera. It's, you're, the thing that changes is you have zeros across your quarterly reporting sheet. But it's, it's just, I mean, y'all can wait until next year, next quarter and let more money go, but. I'm up for for free. I mean, I'm I promise I'm not a used car salesman. There's some, there's nothing that's hidden, there's, this is not a too good to be true situation. Um, I'm going to be doing this with other counties uh already, so having all a part of it would be an honor. And really, it's uh an easy way to to keep money.
And how long are your services going to be free for?
Uh, it's my pledge at the back, it's through the fourth, uh, after. A full financial year savings at the end of, at least till the end of September thirtieth, is what I've got there next year.
And then what are your fees?
Oh, I'm not, uh, you'll have the system that won't involve paying me either.
It'd be a contractual arrangement.
Yeah.
If we decide to go with you.
I don't, I'm not here, I don't want to run your system afterwards. I want to equip you with everything you, you could have E T C O do, do a contract with them.
Do you do mediations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's that's where your money comes from now.
Well, I, believe it or not, I've only made money litigating, I've only mediated for free. It's, I was naive even at the most when I thought, you know, at twenty five, people would want to hire a medi- mediator by age to like, you know. But uh, you know, all these years now, uh, it's just, I I feel like. I would love the opportunity to get paid on it, uh, but at the end of the day, I care more about the whole idea and purpose of mediation. Uh, and so I, there is no, nothing in there, you know, pre- on assignments that I get something. Um, it's really up to y'all. The pledge is, I guess, contingent on y'all uh establishing the system by the end of the year. But that is a piece of paper, so.
What what are our advantages to doing it with other counties?
Uh, we have our administrator and uh counties, it really helps more the smaller counties. Uh, because they might only have, let's say, five or ten cases a year that could use this or their fund, like, uh, let me get it wrong. Um, believe, uh, rains, for instance. Rains, uh, over that ten quarters only had six grain. So to them, it's like, you know, what what do we do with that? And so that could go to a a pool uh through E T C O. And my understanding is that the administrative part of it, as far as staffing, et cetera, would be through them. So there'd be no concern like, you know, we don't want the the county officers to also have, I'm not trying to put one on people's plate. Uh, it it really is not, you could pay an administrator once a year during the settlement week, a thousand dollars, that's about a forty hour a week. Just to do the intake and coordinating, you know. Get the case from the judges and then, okay, you're going to this mediator, that mediator. But uh, and these will be good mediators. I'm, you know, the second uh example shows where you could have a bonus type of compensation built into it. Where uh your your half day mediation is three hundred dollars and it's successful, that's another hundred dollars, so it becomes a four hundred dollar.
But that's all, that's all far beyond where we are. What what you're saying is, i- if you boiled it all down to the bottom line is, right now, we send money quarterly to the state. That money could stay here and be used to pay or reduce costs for mediation for Van Zant residents. And it can be paid to anybody who mediates, anybody that the judge, uh, you know, he he says he sends all of his civil cases to mediation. It could be used to reduce some of their costs. The bottom line is, is that that money no longer is going to the state, it's staying here. And and they would, they would li- like, um. Like on our current cases where you have add items or you have uh you have appointed counsel, they would just turn in their slip. This is, you know, I did a half day mediation, um, can I have a check for four hundred dollars? It could be as simple as that. It it doesn't have, there's not to be administrators, there doesn't have to be somebody else. It's just another piece of paper that the attorney, that the that the mediator fills out and says, hey, I did a mediation for this case. With the cost number and sends it in and he's paid.
And the W nine.
Four hundred dollars or eight hundred dollars or whatever the case.
Yes, sir.
And you're not, you're you're not doing this for any other reason than than altruism, honestly.
Yeah, no, I uh, big community service guy and I just, when I came home, I saw this as an easy way to get back. Because I'd already been doing this with Rosaria County and so Stell just kind of said, hey, you should explore this on a wider uh range and that's what I'm doing.
And that's what makes it so hard for everybody to believe.
Right, no. Trust me, uh, so no shrinks attached. Uh, I I think it's awesome, but at a minimum, I get to go around, see all these county court houses, we got some cool ones up here. Uh, but no, it's uh, also, you know, it's, since I didn't get it done in Rosaria County, it's also, to me, it's it's, uh. You know, I ready to, I guess, succeed on this in a sense of like seeing this whole mediation idea. Make positive, you know, changes or positive have positive effects on our community.
Some of the potential cautions uh would be that the legislature could change the way that uh. They could change a- and no longer allow counties to keep this money. They also could put limitations or restrictions or say that you've got a staff of, you know, you've got to staff an administrator. You have to have at least three capable, qualified mediators that have completed all this. So they could put things that are not in place, they could put those in place in the future and put strings on keeping the money. In which case, we would just say, you know what, well, we'll send money on to the state.
Yes, sir, I and I mean, the, the law itself on the, uh, well, the qualified immunity part, uh, that was, I think it's the same section as this, but. There's issues with true reporting when it comes to this stuff because there's, mediations are afforded a lot of confidentiality protection. So there's, there's issues there, but. Since nineteen eighty seven, the Supreme Court has had the opportunity to set up reporting requirements, you know, et cetera. They have not yet, you know, we're almost forty years late, sure, they can do anything, any session. But uh, you know, why not, you know, something going to change next year? Well, at least you saved this border to do something with it, you know, it's twenty grand, you know, uh.
And there could be a change later that allows Harris County to keep that money within their general budget. Quick question, what is it that we have to do to establish A D R?
So I proposed uh draft is in there, but it's uh, you all vote and.
Resolution.
Resilience.
Yeah, that's it.
And in there, it says, you know, there, I look at it as phases, their first phase is saving. You you need funding to have a effective operating system, that to be effective requires money. So there's time to build money and during that time, we're doing our due diligence. It would be hasty to say, we order establish and this is how it's going to work without taking time to call to all the judges, hear all their concerns. Hear how it might wo- work for them or might not work for them. All those things are important and figuring out what is the best thing for Van Zant County.
Y'all said if the money that goes to the state is used for statewide filing system?
Electronic filing system where we follow, where we follow cases in.
Do we receive anything back from that?
It works sometimes, it's sometimes, yeah. And I, you know, it doesn't say, it says go to that fund. Uh, so who knows what what room the comptroller has with that fund, you know. But it's generally the smaller counties, the hundred ninety three are not the top twenty counties uh that have paid all this money. So it's, it's still the debt trend in small counties, but right in front of them, this is a benefit in the sense of finally funding is available. To help out these smaller counties to have the same systems that the big counties have.
So, uh, Josh, do you have, uh?
So uh Josh, do you have uh mediations for indigent people? Well, or they can't afford the mediator fee?
So can basic civil cases? Usually not, usually I'll send them to a uh. Settlement conference where they're just, we're kind of talking to each other. I have. Use the judicial thumb of a few lawyers from time to time to get them to volunteer as mediators. And uh there have been several volunteers stepped in, it's something that I hope. Can be settled, especially with something that that I've looked at that can be settled. Without the escalation, unless you have a contested hearing, a trial. Everybody, very long, he comes out, everybody points a finger at each other, like it's real hard to keep the peace active. And a lot of times, these are neighbors, sometimes family and whatever else, so I see something like that and money is is the only hang up. We've got, we've got some decent resources around that to volunteer their time to do that. Now, the as to the the settlement fee thing, uh. Uh there are many counties that that I've pressed in before that do a settlement fee type uh setup. They'll usually do it during that September week when uh when all judges require to go to the hand conference. Uh that tends to be Labor Day week. The difference between what I've experienced there and here is uh resource availability. We have a significant problem in our local bar, we don't have an active bar association anymore. Um that I think the bar here is a mess, that's twenty seventeen maybe. Uh and our bar is dying. Uh there are very few new young lawyers that are coming here. Uh.
Here in Benz and County?
To Benz and, yeah, I mean, you can you can look around the square here and see the spaces that are opening up and. I mean, I I, you go down to my office there, uh I. I think the first or second week I was here, I attended a lawyer funeral and I took the old uh. Uh bulletin or whatever they call it and and set it there on uh on my uh bookshelf. And over the last few years, that's just built and built and built, so many have have passed. And there's not new.
New blood.
New blood coming in, so we've been having that struggle, of course. Those reasons we stand from the from the appointment side of juveniles and ad items, manuals. Just getting folks to in here to do the work has been a challenge, there's more and go to the to the uh contract system for dispelling appointments. Uh just having folks here to do it is is hard, so getting mediated is hard, it's it's like, like he said at the Brad County. You have to reach out to these other areas, kind of pull those folks in. The settlement weeks that we've done before, like in Smith County, there's five hundred lawyers. And the big firms will send their young guys, the 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 fresh green lawyers, they'll send them and say, hey, you're gonna volunteer. And go and sell some, you know, uh my my fence is is a foot over on your truck kind of suit. And so that works well there, it's just we don't have those resources, it's not right now to do it. I I'd be, I'd be happy to see something and I really think that justice courts are getting getting hit hard. They tell me that uh there's very good possibility that the amount of controversy. Uh is going to be increased in the next last letter session. Uh they tried in the last letter session, but they're talking about, there's two different proposals, one to put it at twenty five thousand. And one to put it at fifty thousand.
Wow.
Fifty thousand is a lot, the twenty five thousand is a lot, but certainly fifty for those type of cases where. Well, status don't apply, well, procedure don't apply, it's people's court free for all. Some of those might be, you know, you might be helping with JP's lot, give it them, give it them an extra tool. I I'm worried about something happening that takes a tool away from the ADR. I think from the sounds of things, maybe it could be structured so that that doesn't happen. But it may be an opportunity for you also structured to give them a tool to help them with some of the things they do, especially if. Let's such your, yeah, put some extra stuff on all this.
Not if, not if.
I just want to add that one point the judge brought up, which is, I think is the most important, it's a true resolution of a conflict that they get. Sitting down, I did my uh forty hours training during uh child custody cases. And I mean, some of, that's why I didn't want to get a family involved in that or because of how, you know, you just see those conflicts, but. Folks, mediators are able to get in there and. Hey, you know, calm everybody down and get the focus back to the most important people and if a kid, it's, you know, and so it's. Those high emotional conflicts, you know, getting it off your chest, generally, you know. That's all they really want and then uh they're able to work some out and then they go back into the community as a, you know, satisfied with the justice.
Thank you very much for coming out here, George.
Thank you all, I really appreciate it and I I hope y'all take me up on my offer there, my pledge, uh and. I'm happy to uh my card's in there, that's my cell phone, uh any question, I I would love, uh. That's why I really appreciate Harrison County, just I got drilled for an hour and a half and that's what this is about, I know. I really appreciate uh.
All right, very good.
Maybe we should have gone to mediation. So that concludes, I'll make sure, yep, if there's nothing else, uh all right, I'm number five in German, we are now adjourned. At four fifteen. The, let's see.